All right, the next item is Howard Park Community Center Architectural Designs. Ms. Rockwell.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Johnson. Kimberly, Ms. Rothenberg. So, I'm here today to talk about the Howard Park Community Center. We do have two presentations for you this morning. This is, I'm sorry, I'm Leah Rockwell, the Director of Parks and Recreation. This is a penny sales tax project, just to start you off with where this funding is coming from. The funding is just shy of five million for this project. We've had a great deal of public engagement, including online surveys, park intercept surveys, gathering information. We've had a presentation actually in the park as an event so that people can come out and actually feel the designs while they're actually standing in the area where the community center is to be placed. The existing community center was built in the 60s. It's small, it's antiquated, it does not currently meet ADA standards as far as our restrooms. I mean, we have made them ADA accessible, but we'd like to bring them up to current really awesome code and give the community what they deserve as far as a community center. I'm not going to go on and on, I'm going to let our two architects provide information regarding their two designs. They are very different. And that's why we're here today, because the community themselves could not give us a definitive answer as to which of the two designs they preferred. We did take it to the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. They do have a recommendation of which one they prefer, but I'd like for you all to take a look at them before I give you Prax recommendation. And with that being said, I'd like to, who's going first? Do we know? So, let's go alphabetically. Alfonso Hernandez Architects. We have Alfonso Hernandez who will present his design. So, come on up and let's get your design set up and ready to go.
Okay, got it. Okay, well, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you very much for this opportunity to be able to present this project. If it's okay, I think I might be allowed to remove this for now?
Yeah, that's fine.
Again, I do appreciate being here. My name is Alfonso Hernandez. I'm an architect. I'm here, located in downtown West Palm Beach. The address is 222 Clemato Street. And again, I've been really excited to be able to present this. It's been a great opportunity to have had an opportunity, again, to meet with the community and to work with staff, to be able to provide this vision for you guys. So, I'd like to go ahead and just kind of take you through it. This is Mr. Arman, by the way. He's our job captain. Thank you. Keeps me in line, too. So, as I mentioned, the project is one that we've been working for a while. We really wanted to have just a chance to kind of share with everybody what this vision is. And so, I'm just going to start out with telling a little bit about the history. Briefly, don't want to take too much time, but just to kind of explain that Howard Park really has been an important part of the city. It's actually, at one point, was basically the edge of civilization as we knew it, right at Howard Park. And that's where you had docks that would come in from the glades and they would do, bring in produce and so forth. So, it's been kind of an important part. Also, there was, as you can see, some of the images on the bottom. The military also trained during World War II here. There was a training area, and that's also part of the armory, some of the history of the place. So, it's been really quite an interesting place for the city. And it's also a very important part that I wanted to share is a story about D.D. Howard. So, D.D. Howard, or the park is named after D.D. Howard, because he really did a lot for this area. One of the things that he did that was really important is that he created basically the vision for a park. And that's something that, again, eventually took his name. He was, you know, the superintendent at the time, in the 1930s. And one of the really interesting things that D.D. Howard did is not just created the park, basically allowed for, you know, this park to grow the way that it's grown. And he did something pretty interesting. He also donated trees throughout Broward, Dade, and Palm Beach County. It happened to be the Royal Puensiana that was very colorful, was very bright, and he thought it really worked very well down in South Florida and being in this location where the warmth is something that really symbolized and that resonated with him. And so, we've taken all these ideas and basically now we want to basically present how D.D. Howard became very instrumental in the way that we approached this project. So, as you can see, this is the existing park. You have the parking lot right in the center. On the right-hand side of that, which is a pink structure, really is the existing facility. And as it was stated, it's really too small, it's outdated, and there's a lot of things that are not working with it. So, that's really where the main work is going to be. And there's also some shuffle boards that in time, at this point, it's really not used anymore. It was really important at one point, but no longer really applicable. And so, as we continue in the design, then that's basically the focus. And one of the things that we also did that we thought was pretty interesting is really to try to understand what is the context of the place, especially specifically for the civic structures. In this case, obviously, the convention center is located just adjacent to the east side. We have the Crabbit Center, and you'll see the structure there. And then, right on the other side of this, we have this kind of industrial area, which is also pretty exciting, a lot of interesting things that are going in this location, and obviously, the Armory Building to the right-hand side. So, this is some of the more of the context of where we're located and the proximity of the building to the other structures. And now, as we start looking at the building, one of the areas that we were looking at, and as Leah had mentioned, is that there is a limited amount of funding for this particular project. So, in this case, we have the existing building, which is very close to Parker Avenue. And on Parker Avenue, a great place for it is because basically it keeps the cost low. We're not destroying the parking lot, we're not destroying other areas. So, it really made a lot of sense for it to be located in that particular location, and that's what we had proposed. And in this case, we have an open green area that's right in front of it. So, it may be a great opportunity for, let's say, events to happen in those places. So, moving on, let's say, as we look at the building, again, one of the things that inspired us is, again, D.D. Howard and the Royal Puensiana. And so, here, in this case, we'll see that beautiful flowering tree that's located along Parker, which is where we're proposing to have it. And so, the structure is basically, it's basically wrapping or hugging, let's say, the tree and basically embracing the community, and that's what this gentle curve really means to do. And so, the building itself has a lot of interesting ideas and functions, and really, the idea is to bring community together. And so, in this case, as you come through, you have obviously the entrance desk, a little bit of a sitting area. And the item number two there, you see highlighted, is a cafe. So, that the community now, you know, as, these days are different than the way it used to be. People now get together in cafes, be able to enjoy refreshments, et cetera. So, we have that included. And then, obviously, there's other functions in there. So, there may be a gymnasium location, and it really is something that potentially could develop even further, depending on what the needs of the community, in this case, working with staff, it may change. And then, a little bit further to the right is going to be basically an area where, let's say, folks can potentially lease out that space for a party. And so, it becomes really a very, a nice social area as a banquet room, and it's got a small kitchen as well that can service the area. And so, on the other side, on number 12, is really where the community has a multipurpose room, and they could do different, let's say, events and different things that happen in there. So, there's a simplicity in the envelope in order for us to reduce and try to keep the cost low, but at the same time, open so that allows for a very interesting, let's say, a very strong focal point as you approach the building. So, as we continue in through the design, as I mentioned, one of the things that's very important to us is how, what do you want to feel as you come into a park? And so, one of the things that we're very interested in is looking at nature itself and the relationship of a building and people to nature. That's why we go to a park. And so, for us, that story was really very important. And so, as we look at, you know, what this potential vision is, and again, understanding different comments and also feedback from the community, we realize that this could really work with us. So, we have a lot of shading elements, we have some columns that in some cases become a little bit more, let's say, sculptural in shape. And this is something that, you know, historically for architects, we really do enjoy the opportunity to be able to tie in art and architecture as fluid as possible. So, as you can see here, some of the ideas that we talked about is basically this, where you have a very strong focus as to what the building is, where it's located. It's very inviting as far as to see visitors can come. You have areas for bikes, obviously, for folks to be able to enjoy. And then, you could always see that glimpse of the beautiful Royal Puensiana, which is off to the left-hand side. So, as you come through, in this case, we do have D.D. Howard's, let's say, idea of this Royal Puensiana also implemented into the architecture itself. And so, there is, let's say, this metal cladding which creates these shadows, not just shadows as you come through, but also on the canopy. And then, the idea is when the light hits it, depending on different times of the day, there's a shadow of leaf patterns that are going to be basically reading from one side to the other. So, the idea is, again, is to really try to feel and very much being close to nature. And so, as you take it through the other images, again, you're going to see some of those same principles and ideas. So, sometimes, just by creating light and shade, it allows to have a dramatic effect on a facade. And so, the tree, again, is a reminder of what D.D. Howard did. The tree is also the reminder of being attached to history and then looking at to see how one may be able to continue through and see inside the building. And so, in this case, we're going to take you, just the camera basically walks around the park so you can see the rest of it. So, this view is located a little bit along the south side, and you can see the idea is to really be engaged with pedestrians, people potentially sitting outside, enjoying some of the environment. And as you come through, this is on the other side of the banquet room. So, from the banquet area, you can slide the doors open and now be engaged on an exterior area. So, it may be really pleasant, let's say, if we have a wedding or a party or something like that, would be, again, something that's hopefully very enjoyable, and that's why we thought it would be great to have a shading area at that particular location. And so, in this case, the columns are just not a straight column, but they do have a little bit more of a sculptural feel. Now, the final, final design will happen as we continue developing the project, but this is a vision that we thought may be worthwhile sharing. And as we continue, again, the idea of having nature and having plants, in this case, we have a row of palms, but we also have some oaks along the side, and the idea is to create shade and engagement for people to be able to sit, enjoy, and also relate to the structure as much as possible. So, we have a nice green area in front of the building. So, let's say, it could be great for events, it could be great for just enjoying, taking the family out there, and again, having this backdrop of the building, which actually creates a really nice definition of the edge of this perimeter for the park. And then, again, as you continue walking to the other sides, again, you're reminded with the beautiful Royal Puensiana, which is located, and it's very clear, and you can actually see that. And also, again, the idea is that you take that, let's say, thought process, and we applied it to the panels that are located above the windows. So, also, the light, as it comes through, creates these beautiful patterns on the ground, and it becomes something really enjoyable for those that are using the building. So, it's not just the outside, but it's how the shadows and light works inside the building. And then, as we continue, the camera, at the end, you'll see, let's say, as you're leaving the park, you get a glimpse of the concept, which was, again, this relationship between nature, this particular gesture from D.D. Howard, and the building itself. And then, as I mentioned, on the inside, we really had an interesting program, and the program really involved a lot of the information that the community was seeking. The community was asking to have an area for engagement. And so, even though we live in a, you know, in a COVID times right now, we hope that in time, whether we all wear masks or we won't wear a mask, we still need to come together as a community, and that's what we were looking to do, is to have a nice cafe, to be able to have a sitting area for, in the lobby, in which you can actually enjoy, let's say, storytelling. And I'll explain that in the next images as we come across. But some of the ideas that you see there is that, in a community, we want to be able to not just come together as a community, but also, for example, maybe that, let's say, there's a story that staff wants to share, that wants to tell about the history of the park. And so, we want to be able to have a location where they sit, where they enjoy, and be able to tell the story. Maybe the story is about D.D. Howard, it could be about the Everglades, or it could be the connection of what the building is doing to the environment. So, these are the type of relationships that we're looking for, and of course, to be able to, again, have exercise in other areas that are really very interesting and hopefully very engaging to the community. And so, as you can see, that's really the idea. The light comes through, and these are just patterns of light that have these leaf patterns that will be able to create this beautiful arrangement, as you can see, on the walls and in the areas. And as you can see beyond where the person's sitting, there's a storytelling location at that particular area. And as you look beyond, you also see the tree, which is, again, part of sculpture and part of the architecture as well. And from the inside, looking towards the east, you see a little bit of the cafe on the right-hand side, sitting area, be able to, again, enjoy that type of feeling. From a distance, we're able to see a glimpse of the park, we're able to see the other parts that are actually pretty special. And again, the idea is, again, to be, have that connection to nature, and that's what this idea, what this design's about. And again, see the patterns on the floor and other areas as well. And so, that basically just explains what the building and the structure is about. And then, this slide really is just to kind of reiterate some of the feedback that we received, which I thought was pretty important, to be able to share with you all, so you can kind of see some of the mindset. So, in this case, there was 293 folks who had surveyed this particular design, and I think we had an overwhelming, very high support between the four and five, 56 and 21 percent. And obviously, there's a moderate as well. So, in total, between the three, four, and five, it's about 90 percent approval, and the highest votes, again, are about 163. Now, not everybody, you know, loved it. I think there was 6 percent, which rated a little bit lower, and 2 percent, which rated it low. So, we really do feel that the majority of the people who reviewed the project really did enjoy it, did enjoy some of these ideas, and wanted to share some of the comments that we did, that we received, which were very encouraging. So, in this case, for example, the first one says showcases the history and inspiration behind the architecture in a beautiful, eye-catching way. It's a conversation starter. I also liked that. Every element has an explanation and ties back to the tree inspiration. So, that's very much what we explained. A few more, just if it's okay with you all. It has a new feeling of a vibrant neighborhood, and it will draw users from up-and-coming neighborhoods to the west of the railroad tracks. So, I think it does try to bring in some. The strong incorporates, I think I meant, it strongly incorporates a nature-inspired design. So, these are some of the ones that are quite nice, and just a few more here. Openness of lobby area, I love the idea of a cafe and gym for the community. I would certainly capitalize on such things. My family takes daily walks to Howard Park, and this would make all the more enjoyable. So, again, these are some of, again, very enjoyable feedback. I like the modern feel and how it still evokes a feeling of nature. I love that the roof feels like a tree canopy. So, again, those are just some of the comments. Now, we also realize that there is a lot of nostalgic in the community. So, there are some folks who, again, think their heart is in the fact that they don't want to see a lot of changes, and I get that. But we do have a vibrant city, and this vibrant city, if there's any constant, it's that there's change. There's always change. So, I understand, and I'm willing, very, very, I'll be very eager to work with staff to make sure that we can incorporate all the feedback as much as we can. But as far as we're concerned, we've pretty much reached out, and we've gotten really positive feedback from everybody, and that's something that we're very proud of. So, thank you very much for your time, and if there's any questions, let me know. Otherwise, we'll allow the next team to come and present. Thank you.
Any questions? Comments? Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Shouf.
I just had a question for staff, Mayor, if I could.
Okay. We have a question for staff?
Thank you, Alfonso. So, moving on.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Shouf.
Commissioner Shouf.
Thank you very much, Leah. I was just wondering, on the presentations that we'll be seeing today, was there a budget presented to architecture so that the pictures that we're seeing would be very executable according to the budget that we have?
Yes. So, where we're at right now is, these are conceptual designs, and when we make a selection, hopefully, this morning, on the final architect that will move forward with the project, they will design to the budget. So, based on what they're presenting today.
Okay. So, the pictures being presented today are reasonably within a budget with some options? Okay, thank you.
Yes, but I'd like to just also say that we are in different times right now. So, it's, there are some moving targets with the cost of products and services that are, we're having some issues with as far as construction goes. But by the time the designs have been completed, we're hoping that, of course, some of those costs will have come down.
Sure, and certainly understand the construction budget constraints. I've had some professional calls just like that this morning. But as we're looking at it, these are executable, we're not looking at anything that, there were budget parameters given.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert.
So, and they did, both teams did provide us with preliminary budgets based on the designs, which we insisted that the budgets and the designs were within our budget.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Just a quick question about the contents within the community center. Did you give direction on that, or was that up for interpretation by each of the designers?
The community actually gave the input as to what they'd like to see within the community centers as well as staff. So, we spent a great deal of time providing different surveys from the community and deciphering that information, as well as they heard directly from the community at our different engagement outreaches. So, the space that we've asked that's being designed is space that it can be changed. For instance, on Alfonso's design, he had a banquet room, which really is also going to be a multipurpose room that can be used for a variety of things, not just banquets. He just happened to have it set up as a place where you might have a wedding or something like that. So, all of the spaces will be able to be utilized in a variety of different ways, like most of our community centers. Does that answer your question?
It does. I guess I didn't realize we would be selecting, so is that what we're doing here? We're serving as a selection board?
That's what, that is what we're asking, is that you help us make that decision because the community themselves could not make a decision. So, now we have to go above the community, which would now be the city commissioners and the mayor, to give us direction as to which architect to move forward with.
All right, I didn't know we were selecting either. And the question I have for the city attorney, since this is a workshop and not a formal meeting, whether that is...
Yeah, I'll let the city attorney, but we didn't tee it up as a special city commission meeting wherein you all would be making the selection. We teed it up as a work session where we can get input from the board on preference.
So, this is not a formal selection, we're just offering input?
Right, input, yes. And no, you don't, you do not vote at your work sessions?
So, right, so we're just going to talk?
Correct, yes.
And then, we're going to have a formal motion and second and actual formal vote, right?
Correct, Mayor, no votes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, next team.
So, next we have CPZ Architects, Chris Zimmerman and Joseph Berry. I don't know which one is going to be giving the presentation today. Just as a point of reference, they also did the fire station four, which is adjacent in the park. So, we're going to let them give their presentation now.
It will open, come on. There we go. Okay. Thank you. Good morning, CPZ Architects. We're really happy to be here this morning and wish you all a good morning. CPZ Architects is right here in West Palm as well. We have 17 people. We're really engaging firms, so you'll see some of our members here today. We've got Tony and Chris and Joe. They've all been involved in this project. We have a real collaborative office environment. I'm Chris Zimmerman. I am the principal and owner of CPZ Architects with over 36 years of experience in parks and rec. And you can kind of see in the bottom, fire station four, we're really proud of that. Worked a lot with the community. Joe Berry's here with me today as well. He's another registered architect in our office and going to play the key role. He will be your architect of record on this project, has put a lot of effort into it. As I said, we're right here in West Palm, 1601 Belvedere Road. We are a small business. We're really proud of this, and I think you'll see a lot of this come out. We had a lot of community engagement when we did this. We started with a modern design and went to all sorts of designs as we worked through the community to come up with this mission-style building that represents the community and the people within that neighborhood. Again, a lot of engagement with the community. But one thing, before we go into Joe's presentation on the building, I just want to point out one really cool thing that we do as a firm is community engagement. This is a community center we just opened in Doral just before COVID, but what was engaging was, we did art in public places. And we actually brought a blacksmith in, and the city set up community engagement in the park. And they did blacksmithing. And when they worked on this, they created these leaves and pieces of a sculpture that are now, you can see, everybody got their hands dirty. It was a great weekend, but it's all part of this art in the middle of the community center. So, it's that kind of thing that CPZ really likes to do. We give back to the community with memorials and things like that. So, I just wanted to just kind of say who we are. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Joe. He's done a lot of work on the project and can introduce you to the project.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Good morning, everybody. So, just continuing the thought that Chris put out there about community involvement and some of the things that were already discussed this morning, one of the first parts, or how we got introduced to this project, was through the RFQ process, and in that, there were surveys that were provided to us that the community was part of. And some key words kind of repeated themselves, and you can see some of them here, you know, community, neighborhood events, art in public spaces, paintings, education. So, these kind of things are what led us to the direction that we went in the original conceptual design, and then we continued that thought process throughout. We met with the community back in, I think it was July, and we had a presentation, both firms did, and we met with the community, and we shared with them our thoughts and our renderings and our ideas on the community center. And we asked questions, and we got a lot of feedback. Again, a second survey went out to the public, and we listened, you know, and some of the things that we heard pay homage to the neighborhood, relate to the park, indoor-outdoor relationships. Security was a big issue and a repeated thought that came up. And a lot of people like the traditional-style architecture, keeping in with the neighborhood. And as Chris said, when we did Station Four, through that process, we originally started with a modern building. The community led us to the design that you see today. Budget awareness. We talked about it earlier, Leah brought it up. Yes, we are aware of the city's budget. And through the process, we brought in professional cost estimators, and we worked with them to develop this budget. We kept in mind that in order to help maximize the building and minimize budget impacts, we looked at traditional construction materials... budget impacts, we looked at traditional construction materials and methods. We also looked at repurposing some of the existing community center, and you'll see some of that in the slides to come. We visited the site. We took notes on things that we sort of noticed. And one thing was, there are many points of entrance to the park. And one thing that maybe we want to look at is incorporating a common gateway, a theme, so that there's a sense of arrival at all of these various points. The first thing that we did when we saw the RFQ, when we read the client... Sorry, the neighborhood comments, was deciding on where to position this building. We thought that leaving the parking lot where it is made sense, both from a budget standpoint but also from a functionality point of view. We thought of this building as not just a building place on the park, but a building that's part of the functions of the park, integral with the park. We looked at how to maintain a great level of visibility for security reasons, so that we have clear line of sight through the project. We incorporated the existing roof trusses of the community center and refurbishing the restrooms that exist there, repurposing those trusses into an outdoor pavilion. You'll see some renderings later on. In terms of the building, there's a 9,000-square-foot building that's proposed. 6,600 square feet roughly is indoor space, another 2,400 square feet of covered porch. So what this does, it helps us bring the indoor activities out, outdoor activities in. There's that relationship between the building and the park activities. We thought about creating art walls where art activities could take place and art can be displayed. There's a central point within the building at the reception where one single person can have full visibility of not only the building interior and the functions that are happening there, but also views to the outside. So to look at a large portion of the plan, we have a general reception area, some offices, but also a kids' club, sorry, a place where families can come. Adults can do some work at the café. And you'll see some images to come. But a place where a family can come, spend the afternoon, spend a weekend, and the kids' club directly off of the reception area. So again, that single point can have visibility of that area, which is very important from a security standpoint. We incorporate multipurpose rooms. They can have the flexibility of serving small groups, 30 people, 20 people, but also large enough to serve bigger functions, 100-plus people. There's a kitchen that can serve both of those rooms or all of the rooms within this building, but also support the café, a social place, gathering place, again, for families to meet, friends to meet, to do some work, or just to enjoy conversation. All of these spaces have the ability to expand to the exterior, again, engaging the outdoor The elevations, you'll see, very traditional in nature, keeping in line with the residential neighborhood behind it, and also reflecting some of the design influence from Station The top view is a view from Parker Avenue. Bottom view is from the lawn looking west. Again, top view, north elevation looking south. Bottom view is that looking north through the great lawn area. You can see in that bottom image, even in the top image, the transparency through, functionality through, the visibility. This is a view heading up Parker Avenue. You see the outdoor activity area to the right pergola area and extension of that multipurpose room. And then the northwest corner is what we're calling the gateway. A gateway not only to the community center but to the park. Because again, it's not just a building at the park. It is the park. And we like the concept of incorporating all of those current activities and supplementing it with this building. So as you enter, you're outside, you're in the park, you're undercover. You have the community center on your right with a lot of glass. That glass is undercover, shaded. Sustainable thought process there. As you enter from the park, this is a view from that existing gazebo, roughly in that area. You'll see the open pavilion on your left. You see the open activity area on your right, where yoga classes, painting classes can occur outside undercover. The pavilion, repurposing the existing community center trusses, creating an outdoor space. The restrooms on the east and west of this are existing. They're interior space now. We can refurbish those and use them to help support the park activities. The lawn area. Families can gather. Activities can take place. If you see that Howard mural, it's an homage to the existing building and some of the community participation in creating This is a view inside the reception area, looking through the glass. You can see that center lawn area, again, bringing inside out. The café is in the background. A view looking through the café, again, to the exterior, layering these activities both inside and A view of the overall. You can see, we even paid attention to where we would put mechanical equipment, both from a constructibility standpoint, budget standpoint, and not to have equipment on the ground. We would put them on the roof, at a site easy to maintain and efficient in the way we distribute those services to the building. And Chris?
Thanks, Joe. Just in closing, we're excited about the building. We think it really responds to the community and the park. Pulling it up on Parker Avenue and opening that up to the lawn and creating those community spaces that really engage families and kids and an art festival or something, that the building becomes an integrated part of the park. I think that's what Joe was trying to really push here, is that we kind of forwarded it up on Parker and used that land as it moved forward. It stopped. But anyway, trying to engage, and we're really sustainable. The fire station was a LEED-certified building, so we're looking at LEED certification on the building. That's why you saw a lot of glass, a lot of canopies, a lot of things like that. We really paid attention to how it responds, so it could be LEED-certified, just like your fire station that's there. We do do budgets. You mentioned budget. And we have a professional cost estimator we use on all our projects. Matter of fact, we use them with the CM@RISC on your fire station, just to make sure that the CM was pricing your job appropriately, and they were within 5%. So it was a good... Hedrickson did a good job on that building. And we actually value-engineered that building and saved a half a million dollars on tilt wall. So working with that really paid off for the city. So we're looking forward to another great project on that park, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for this team? Okay, thank you very much.
So those are the two designs. They are very different and very unique in their own ways. And we're just looking for some input to help us make a final decision on which direction to go in for moving forward with a final design and construction of the Howard Park Tennis Center. With that being said, I did promise you after their presentations that I would let you know what PrAC thought. And they're leaning towards Alfonso Hernandez's design, just because they thought it was unique and different and something that the city hasn't seen. So that's what their original recommendation was to the city commission.
All right. Before we enter into that conversation, I think Commissioner Shoff had some...
Thank you, Mayor. I know we're not voting here today, commissioners, but in an abundance of caution, I wanted to disclose that I have hired Alfonso Hernandez Architects for a residential project. I've been advised by the Ethics Department and by the city attorney that it would not represent a voting conflict, but just wanted to disclose.
Excuse me. All right, I don't know how... Okay, we got a couple of hands up, so it looks like it's gonna drive itself. So we'll start with Commissioner Fox and then Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much, Leah. I just had a couple logistical questions. I know both of the proposals included a café, and I wasn't sure, was that something part of the RFQ? Is that something we would operate, or that it was just a café where people would sit and bring their own drinks? Or I just wanted a little bit more background.
So the idea was, it was thrown in there as one of the items for them to consider in their design process. With people now working remotely from home, as it has become more of a norm, we felt that having a café, an internet café, where people could come and sit and maybe work while their kids are in a two-hour program or something like that, would lend itself to a really nice space for our community, as well as, we were told, people walking through the park always think about, they'd like to stop somewhere and get a cup of coffee and sit, because there's some beautiful trees in the park. So there have been requests for something like that at the center.
So that would be something we would bring in another operator, or how do you think that would work?
Most likely, we would bring in an operator.
Okay. And I just wanted to clarify one more thing. I'm assuming all the fields and the dog parks and everything are just left as they are?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the two firms that presented today and for your continued work in our city. I think it's great. I know the works of both of your firms throughout our city, and it's both very... It's stellar, and I'm pleased to see that you're interested in Howard Park as well, so thank you. Leah, I have a question before I give my feedback on the designs. Can... When you say that the... When you say that you got community input on it, I'd like a little, just a bit of a summary of the community input you got. I'm guessing that it revolved around what you just said, a café. I do recall, it's been over a year since we started this process, you know, the community space was a big piece of it. But I just want to know what else you heard, you know, an overarching summary of that. And then when you say the community didn't come to a decision on one way or another, what does that mean exactly?
So we sent out a poll to all the neighborhood associations that surround that area, and we asked them to give us their thoughts on the two designs. And in getting their results, not one of the designs came out above and beyond the others. They weren't like, definitely we want to go with this one, or definitely we want to go with that one. It was just kind of like, they weren't... There was no commitment from the community. They both, they gave some, just what they liked about one and what they liked about the other and what they didn't like about one and what they didn't like about the other. So as much as we got a lot of input from them, we really didn't get a definitive answer. But in that, we did incorporate a lot of the stuff from prior to this design, all the input that we got from them, from, they wanted like a room that they might be able to do aerobics in or yoga in, a banquet area, a small kitchen for events, a place for kids. So all that stuff was incorporated in the designs.
Okay. You know, I drive by this park almost every single day, or I ride by it, or I run by it. And I will tell you, what I see the most there are families. And families who I don't generally see out at some of our other cafés or restaurants. It reminds me of my own family when, you know, that's where we held my birthday party every year, was in the park. We had a piñata, you know, it was the whole family, the whole neighborhood came out for it, and it was a very special place. And so that was something that I was looking for in these designs, was where did I see families feeling very comfortable, families of all backgrounds, of all socioeconomic levels? You know, both were beautiful presentations, but, you know, when I first saw the mission style, I thought that that really complemented the neighborhood. But I did feel, I was thinking about those families. And when I looked at it, I felt like that looked more office-like and more just structural, where the first design, you know, implemented the trees, and I just felt like it was more of a relationship with the outdoors. So I did appreciate that. Although with the mission style, you know, I really did like that outside cover area. I think the more shade we can provide, the better. I see these families huddled underneath either trees or some of the structures that we have in the neighborhood. And so I think, I think they both included a lot of shade structures, but I just want to make sure we focus on that. And I love the open-air feeling of the first presentation. I don't know if it was just the photos that were shown, because I know in the second one, there was the wall of windows as well, or glass at the entrance. But I just felt like I could see through it, and I could see, like, this is very inviting. It's not closed off. For families who might be like, I don't know what's in there. I don't know if I'm allowed in there. That's, you know, not for me, that's for somebody else. And so those were the things that I thought about when these two were presented to us.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? My preference would be the first one. First of all, thank you both for expressing interest in the park and in presenting to us. Both are excellent work product. Unfortunately, I guess, we've been asked to pick one or the other. It does not in any way diminish the quality of the one that, you know, is not selected or whatnot, although we're not doing a formal selection. But I did want to certainly get it out there that I think both are excellent and would be very welcome additions to the park. If I had to choose, or the direction which I'm leaning, it would be for the first team. I like how they even incorporated the nature aspect of it, and there's a story there. But it's close. So just my preference, I'm leaning toward the first one. And I don't want to go into a lot of details, because it makes it seem like I'm putting down the one that I'm not preferring, which I'm not at all. I think either of them would be very good. But if I'm asked to at least weigh in on it, I would go with the first one for a variety of reasons. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for bringing forward two great local companies, which is awesome to see, and two great concepts. I had a question as to the RFP. Were there elements that were required within each RFP? Did both applicants or both presenters incorporate everything that was required within the RFP, beyond the legal portion, of course, but as far as requirements that staff would have put in for the specifics?
Yes, absolutely. They both did.
Great. And were there any requirements for things like LEED-certified buildings, et cetera?
No. What we're leaning towards, at the least, is LEED-certifiable versus actually going for the final LEED certification.
Sure. No, and I agree with my colleagues and with the mayor. Certainly two really great presentations. You know, I think I always look to PrAC as well, and weigh in their advisory and looking at them advising and hearing some feedback here from the DAAS of looking at option one. I think it certainly does provide something that's in contrast to what's currently in the neighborhood but still complements the overall view. The second applicant, again, had a beautiful building, does complement what's existing there, but just it's whether we're looking to look at what's whether we're looking to look at what's existing and continue that, or look at something that has a slight variation. So certainly happy to look in that direction as we're looking to provide some feedback today and go with option one.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I do have a few other questions as it relates to design work. As Commissioner mentioned, the café, that also grabbed my attention, because I don't know, do we operate any other cafés in any of our community centers?
Currently, no.
Okay. You know, I mean, we have a lot of great restaurants in the city, although I can see the need for, you know, drinks and quick bites for families. I recently went to the St. Petersburg Pier and saw that they had just a small little place like that that, you know, would be more family-friendly. I would, you know, I appreciate that, I think we mentioned in one of, or both of the presentations, people who, you know, work from home. I think there's a lot of places like that already, and I would just want to make sure that this focuses on our families' needs and their needs for snacks, because that also makes the kids happy and want to come back. The other was, it looked like on one of the presentations that there might have been a door access from the outside. I don't know if that was to bathrooms, like will there be access to, will there be outdoor access to the bathrooms, or is this the only bathrooms in that park?
We're still in, of course, we'll go into full design, but yes, there will have to be access to bathrooms from the exterior. So if one, the community center isn't open, that there are bathrooms available, as well as if somebody doesn't necessarily want to walk into the center to use a restroom, they can use the park restroom in lieu of.
Okay. And I don't know how final the design, I hear you saying we have some leeway with that. Something that I think would be beneficial to the community would be the ability to take a multipurpose room and segment it. Instead of it being segmented on either sides of the building, that if it was extremely large and we could segment it off, and maybe it's always in half, except for that once or twice a year when we need to have it larger, I think would be very beneficial.
That's our intent. We usually, in our multipurpose rooms, if you look at many of them, Coleman Park, for instance, it's a small community room, but it does divide into two separate rooms for two separate activities. So that would be our intent, to have dividers to divide up the space for additional activities and opportunities.
Great. And I know that a lot of our activities had to change to be at home during COVID. But one of my favorite memories of this park is a huge Easter egg roll, Easter hunt, egg hunt in that park, and I just look forward to us getting back to those kinds of activities.
Oh, yeah, it will happen this year. We will have the big Easter egg hunt that we have always had at Howard Park. We'll have it again this year.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I happen to like the concept of the café. I think it's different, and even though we haven't done it in other parks, I don't think that should limit us. And yes, there are a number of families that are using Howard Park, but we got a number of young professionals as well, and who like the outdoors. And for them to have a place where they could bring their laptop and maybe grab a cup of coffee or green tea, or whatever they drink, the younger generation. And so I think it would be very welcoming there. So I kind of like the innovative idea of a café in one of our parks. Commissioner Schof?
Thank you, Mayor. And to the point of the café, two thoughts. One, I was actually recently approached by a group of Palm Beach Atlantic students that were looking to do something like this. You know, either go into the public realm, they said, there's not a lot of places that we can go and, you know, have a study lounge where it's acceptable to speak. We obviously have a great library, but everything has to be kept to a minimum. They like things a little more casual. So I think having a concept like this is really great. And I guess to Commissioner Lambert's point, I think the one thing that stood out in my mind that was very similar is what we do with the Dunkin' Donuts former space here in the library. It would be important to me, I think, to look to our local community and say, what local business can come in here and thrive, or expand, or whatever the point may be. But I think in my mind, that's the one example I can think of that's most similar to, you know, having a publicly-owned facility with a private operator in it.
Yep.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, okay, Commissioner Fox?
Sorry, one more logistic question. I know that both of the presentations talked a lot about security being something that was top of mind from the community. Do we have special security for the park, or is there anything that we're looking at?
No, we don't. We don't have a security officer at the park, because it does sit between Parker and Lake. It does offer itself to having patrols that go by there more frequently, though certainly lighting is, will be huge, as well as looking at SEPTED while we're designing the building. So construction design that does, that helps to not create opportunities for crime and bad behavior. Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, just one question since you brought up security. I know that right now with the time change, this is usually the time of year that I start to hear from families saying, hey, the park doesn't have lights on at night, and, you know, we're getting off work at 5:30 and it's dark at 5:45. Did we ever remedy that, or?
So, yeah, the playground itself, we added lighting to the playground, so it is. Well, the walkway lighting has been upgraded, but we're in the process of lighting the playground itself. So we've created a safer way in and out, and we're in the process of upgrading the lighting to include the playground.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Are the parks will close after sundown?
The parks are closed except for lighted facilities. So for instance, a basketball court that is lighted would be open at night. A basketball court that is not lighted would not, that part of the park would not be open.
Commissioner Schof?
Thank you, Mayor. And just to summarize on this topic, Leah, because I know we have a number of parks that have penny sales tax projects associated with them, and some are in various stages. Can you just remind us what those projects are?
So the, let's start on the south end. Palmetto Park was a penny sales tax project that included a new playground and some upgrades to the park itself. We are finishing up on just some of the minor concrete removal and benches that were there to put in some new benches and new seating, but that park has been completed as far as penny sales tax with a new playground.
I'll make life a little easier, just to summarize, community centers, that way, because I know you have a number of projects.
That was the only one that's not a community center. Then we have the Howard Park, which is penny sales tax. Pleasant City Community Center was penny sales tax. We are waiting for a final permit for our CO, for the electrical permit to pass. There's an issue in the kitchen, that once that's corrected, we'll be able to open the community center to the community. So those renovations have been completed, except for that one element. So we're hoping that that's corrected soon. And then that inspection, electrical inspection. And then the other penny sales tax project is Coleman Park, which we're in final design and permitting for Coleman Park. And then we have also Gaines Park, which we will start with design on Gaines Park. We've hired an architect to take 30% design plans to 100, and then go out for construction.
Lots of great things. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Ms. Rockwell, do you have what you need?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much for your input, and we're excited to move forward with Howard Park penny sales tax project so that the community can have a great space to grow.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you again, both teams, for.
Oh, I am sorry, Mayor, may I? I just wanted to introduce Edna Benelli. She is our engineer on the project, and she has been holding our hands throughout this with the architects. And she's been, has played a great role, and we're thankful to have her as a part of our team.
Fantastic. Thank you.